All right, greetings. Welcome. Welcome to the first public hearing and information session for the MCI Concord Redevelopment effort. Thank you all for being here today. I'm going to click this forward. There we go. Before we get started, just want to go over a few technical operational points for tonight. Please note, there are, I hope, a few clipboards going around for folks to optionally add your name and contact info for sign in. A few things about, as we get started here, this meeting will be recorded via Zoom. It's also being recorded and shared via the Minuteman Media Network. And all parts of this are considered part of the public record. Just want to make sure that that's clear for everybody. For accessibility purposes, we do have some seats up here in the front here. We're running a closed captioning on the Zoom if anybody wants to take a look at that. Otherwise, we do have a few seats left up front for those who are arriving late. For our Zoom attendees, please note that this is a webinar. Audio is automatically muted and video has been disabled. The meeting will be open to public comment at the end of the formal presentation, both from folks in the room and folks on Zoom. We have moderators taking a look at the chat, and you can also raise your hand online to contribute that way. We will also have a questionnaire available that will be, that some of you may have seen on cards in the room and is also on a QR code that will be shared later. That will be available. We'll be taking about input on folks and just a handful of questions there over the next couple of days, really looking at a questionnaire for the night. This will be ahead of a broader survey that we anticipate going out later on in the process. This is really just an initial point in time. For those on the Zoom, a couple more things. As I said, audio is muted and video has been disabled. If you have technical difficulties, we have an email address there in the corner, mciconcordredevdcamm@mass.gov. Feel free to reach out at that email address for one of our moderators if you have technical issues and through the Q and A function of the webinar. During the public comment period for those online, you can provide written comments in the Q and A. You can raise your hand using the raise hand function on Zoom or using star nine for those who may be dialing in. And when your turn arises, please make sure to unmute yourself. And as I said, there will be a questionnaire. Again, with any questions, please reach out to our moderators. And with that, I will invite up Commissioner Adam Baiki of DCAM to share some initial thoughts this evening.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Adam Baiki. I'm the commissioner at DCAM, which I'm sure is the state agency that everybody knows exactly what we do because you hear about us all the time. We are, we are the agency that's responsible for basically the facilities of the Commonwealth. We're kind of the big facilities management department for the state, and that includes planning, design, construction projects, and also real estate, which is really what brings us here today. So whenever there is surplus state real property that is not needed by the agency or entity that had care and control any longer, it generally becomes the responsibility of our agency to facilitate the process of disposition and redevelopment of that property if there is no state purpose going forward. And that's actually what brings us here today. And I've got to say, one of the things that I have already begun to really enjoy about this particular project is just the level of thoughtfulness and sophistication and knowledge and expertise that is present in this community. I attended the League of Women Voters event back in February, and just the questions people were asking were very insightful, very thoughtful. And, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to have a dialogue with a community about something like this that really has a deep understanding of sort of how things work and what's possible and, you know, frankly knows, knows what's good for your community. Our responsibility here really comes from legislation that your Senator Barrett and Representative Cataldo championed through the budget process, which laid out the sort of ground rules that we all have to work with for how this disposition planning will work for the redevelopment of this property. And we, one of the first things on that list was to hold a public hearing within 45 days of the passage of the budget. So we could have waited, I think, until Sunday, but we're glad to be here tonight. This is, I think, also, you all are really smart to be here tonight because in any kind of planning process, and I've been doing planning of various sorts for several decades now, there's a kind of a, an inverse curve of how far into the process you are and how much of an impact decisions can have. And at the very beginning of a process, the input can be very cost effective and relatively easy to incorporate into projects. And the further down the road you get, which is often when people have the opportunity to engage, a lot of decisions have already been made, a lot of commitments have been made, and untangling and unraveling them when something that differs is brought forward is really complicated and difficult. So again, you all are really wise to be here today. We are basically here with a blank piece of paper today. You know, we really are here to solicit all of the ideas, thoughts, and vision that you all have about how this property can contribute to the community going forward with whatever its sort of new life will become. This is obviously not the only time you will have to participate in that, but this is probably the, the first and best, and we'll have many more going forward. In terms of, you know, our goals, we, we DCAM are not really here to drive the decision making about what this will become or what this is. We are sort of here to facilitate an inclusive planning process and really develop something that makes sense. But the, the state does have certain priorities, certain sort of policy interests that they would like to see represented as we take, as we have opportunities for redevelopments. And so those will be part of the thinking. And there's probably three big kind of policy areas where there's at least some opportunity for this site to play a role, and they probably won't be surprises to you. One of them is the production of housing. And I think we all have a, have a varying degrees, we have an understanding of how housing affordability and accessibility is affecting, beginning to really affect the economic competitiveness of Massachusetts. And so when we talk about, you know, wanting economic development, we're hearing more and more that the number one issue is making sure that employees can afford to live here. And this includes some pretty, pretty high paid employees who are struggling with that. So that is one thing that we would like to see be part of a project. How much, where, what, what form, all that, very much lots to explore and discuss with you. The second is around dealing with climate change. And really, we, we are trying very hard to make sure that every action that the Commonwealth is involved in moves toward decarbonization, and everything is designed in a manner that is responsive and resilient to the inevitable aspects of climate change at this point. So even though we won't be actually constructing whatever is ultimately developed here, we anticipate the private sector will be doing that, we will be likely holding them pretty accountable for trying to be as climate responsive and ideally fossil fuel free as we can get. And then the third is the, what we call access and opportunity. We want to make sure increasingly, the Healy Driscoll administration is very committed to creating opportunities for folks from underrepresented communities and populations to participate in things that will, again, create opportunity, create wealth, and give folks who maybe historically have not had the same opportunities, the chance to gain from projects like this. You know, beyond that, we are very interested in ensuring we ultimately develop a plan for this property and a pathway to get to that plan that is a, a sort of addresses both these regional goals but also the local goals of this community. And we want to make sure that over the next probably several months, maybe years, we'll see, we will be working with you and all your neighbors and others in what we anticipate will be a very robust and inclusive planning process. And to give you some of the indication, I hope, of, we obviously have to sort of, sort of prove that, but give you some indication of the level of commitment that our agency is making to your project in particular, I'm joined by quite a number of members of my staff, which I'll just quickly introduce here today, many of whom will have participatory roles, but I'm trying to work my way over. We've got Paul Crowley, Peter Brigham, Taylor Morris, Maggie Brown, Brianna Whitney, Abby Vladek, Paul Lillhagen, and helping moderate the Zoom, we have Joe Viola. So we are, you are, you are well supported here as best we can. What we anticipate today will be is an open forum where we will mostly be hearing from you. For those of you who thought we would come and unveil an entire development plan, that's not this meeting. We really want to make sure we hear from you at a time again where that input can be most meaningful, and we don't really want to prejudice your input by telling you anything in advance. We really want you to tell us what's important to you. And those, you can, you can make very specific suggestions, or we also welcome broader observations of challenges or problems or things that you think the redevelopment of this property could help solve. You know, I don't know that these are the right ones for you or not, but some examples of the kinds of things I would imagine we might hear are things like my, my adult children are young professionals, very successful. They would love to come back to the town they grew up in, but they can't afford housing here. We might hear something about how important the Assabette River is in Concord and opportunities for access for recreation or even just conservation of the Assabette River. We might hear someone who owns a business in West Concord who would love to see more customers, who can walk to the West Concord Business District. We also, I wouldn't doubt, will hear people who are concerned about municipal finances and property taxes and looking for ways that this property can help, the redevelopment of this property can help the municipal budget. I'm sure we will hear lots of other things that I couldn't think of from you today, and we really very much look forward to that. But before we get into the sort of visioning and that part of the discussion, I know there is continued, there continues to be a lot of curiosity about the status of the Department of Corrections sort of basically moving out of the facility. And we are very fortunate to be joined by some folks from the Department of Corrections, including Commissioner Sean Jenkins. And we want to give him a chance right off the bat here to address sort of what they're doing and how their process is going. And that will probably answer many questions you all have about that before we get into the redevelopment part.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I always tell people I have the most difficult commissioner's job in the Commonwealth, but I think I stand corrected now, so, so good luck with everything. I, I just wanted to come here this evening and take a few minutes just to talk about where we're at with the, you know, Concord location and just give a quick update on that. You know, if you could maybe just give me a few minutes to give you a little historical background on how we got to the closure, seizing housing operation that MCI conquered. The DOC was kind of involved in two unique circumstances. Our prison population had plummeted to about 6,000 individuals. And, you know, there's a movement around the Commonwealth with regards to corrections to really in kind of, you know, humanize corrections and make corrections a little bit more than it was maybe 15 or 20 or 30 or 40, 50 years ago. And so when we do that, we do a lot of stuff for the incarcerated folks inside, but one of the initial challenges, if you have a facility that's really tired, the heating doesn't work regularly, or the AC doesn't work, or all of these various plant challenges you have, it's really hard to make an environment where people can really work on reentry plans and kind of humanize that population. And that's really something we're focused on in the Department of Corrections. So the decision was made based on our population and based on the fact that the facility was really tired. As most of you know, it was built somewhere in the 18th, late 1800s. And so we made a decision to close the facility. We announced it back in January of 19, I'm sorry, 2024. And then on, at the end of June, we moved out the final, about 300 incarcerated folks who went to the facility at that particular time. All of those individuals were just reclassified throughout the Department of Correction and reassigned to various other facilities that we have, some of them a minimum and some of them a medium security, which MCI conquered was. And so I also say we had about 225 staff at the time that were working MCI Concord. And so those individuals, many of them worked their entire career there. And so those individuals, no one was laid off and no one was let go. Those individuals were reassigned through a formal bid process to different facilities throughout the Commonwealth as well. Most of them went to our northern sector based on needs that the department had. Most of those individuals went to SUSA or MCI Shirley for our staff. And so two things I also wanted to add, I know folks were entirely focused on the Brave Unit. For those who were intimately involved with the Brave Unit here at MCI Concord, that has moved to Gardner. Our location facility in Gardner and the Tufts, the Tufts University Program has also been moved to MCI Shirley. So those two programs, I know there was a lot of folks in Concord that were intimately involved with it. Those two programs have been reallocated to, to other facilities, and they're still alive and thriving and, and doing very well. I was just at MCI Gardner for a Brave Unit celebration a few weeks ago, and it's doing very well there. And actually, Gardner is a very, very nice location and set up probably better than MCI Concord was as far as facility plant, plants wise goes. I, as Commissioner Baiki, Commissioner stated, the fiscal year 2025 budget that was signed by Governor Healy included language to authorize the closure and transfer of MCI Concord prison site. So since that January, I'm sorry, June 28 date that we removed the last meeting incarcerated individual out, we have been having, we have a skeleton crew at the facility now. And so that skeleton crew is really focused on kind of decommissioning the site. And when I say decommissioning the site, they're going through all our files that we need to take, all of our files that are important for legal and, and other issues. And it's also really looking at, you know, prisons are unique environments. They have locking mechanisms, they have doors, they have cells, they have furnishings, and they have property, and they have machinery that's unique to prisons. And so we're re-
[inaudible]
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I apologize, sorry. Yeah, sorry. So what we're doing now is, since that January, June 28 date, we have been really working with the skeleton crew at the, at this location. And we're moving, we're kind of identifying what products that we can really move out of the facility and reuse somewhere else, other where it be the kitchen equipment or laundry equipment, well, cells, cell doors and locks and toiletries, whatever those products may be, we're working hard to kind of decommission that at this time. And that obviously takes some time, and that's, that's kind of our focus right now. And so I, we've been working closely with DCAM on that process, and we'll continue to work on it. We have been committed to making sure the property is up kept, you know, is kept, the grass is mowed, and we have made it clear to staff that work there that we don't want the fall, property falling into disrepair during that time period. And so we're really, really intent on making sure that that is done too. I grew up in the area and for years drove by this rotary and saw, saw the Concord Prison and, and realized its value to the folks of Concord. So we are really, really excited about kind of our next, next steps with this. And I am, I get a lot of emails about, about the process, and I don't really necessarily know much about the process, but I get requests for tours, I get requests for historical items and things like that. So we're really working close, closely with our partners to make sure that we accomplish all those requests as best we can. And I know some of you have been inside on tours recently as well. And I just want to say one last thing. Concord Farm is not, is still open and operational, and there has absolutely been no discussions or plans to close Concord Farm. Concord Farm has about 200 individuals there, it's a minimum security facility, and it's very, very valuable to us as part of our reentry process. So Concord Farm was still operating and will continue to be so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Abby Vladek. I'm the Director of Public Private Development in the Office of Real Estate at DCAM. Can we go to the next slide? Taylor, thanks, next one. That's my name for anyone who needs to spell it. So we do have a couple of informational slides prepared here for you this evening. In talking with folks at the town, we thought it could be helpful to provide a little bit more background information about the site and about our expectations for what the planning process might look like. So I'll, I'll speak to that briefly. We've asked a couple of folks in leadership positions at the town to, to make some remarks about how, how we intend to collaborate together on this effort. And then Paul will provide some fun facts and figures about the site. We will do our best to keep that fairly brief because as the, as Commissioner Baiki said, our, our real goal this evening is to hear from you. So with that, next slide, please. So the timeline will come up on the screen. And this is a, this is an illustrative timeline. I think I'll talk to it in a minute, but if you have two takeaways from it, I, I hope they're this. First of all, this is going to be, deliberation takes time, deliberative process takes time. So this is, this is a matter of months or years, not, you know, there's, nobody's putting shovels in the ground tomorrow. And the other thing that I hope you all take away from this is that the town has a really important and active role to play here. So the, the, the key features of, of the process that we anticipate unfolding here, first, as the commissioner said, were, this is kind of the kickoff really, of a, a site planning process to understand some of the questions that he teased. How might development on this site take shape in the future? And that's something that we hope, intend, and are working on doing collaboratively together with, with leadership at the town. There is going to be a key piece for the town to play in terms of putting the zoning and any other regulatory changes in place that will then control what gets developed at the site. Following that, there will be a competitive selection process or, you know, a request for proposals type of process. We're showing it here being led by, by DCAM, but the legislation that was enacted also contemplates that the town might do it too. So that's a, a decision that will have to be made at some point. And, and then a developer would go through permitting before beginning construction. It's usually our practice on, on sites such as this one, not to transfer the land to the selected developer until they have the permits in hand. So it really is, you know, that, the, the local permitting really is the linchpin in terms of being able to, to move something forward on this site. Just another word on the town's role, which again, Mary will speak to in a moment here, where, you know, we've been coordinating closely with, with staff and will continue to do so. The town also has an advisory, has appointed an advisory board that, on this process, who, you know, we've attended their meetings and, and are also working with collaboratively. And then, as I said, zoning, zoning, zoning. With that, Mary, would you like to?
Thank you, Abby. Good evening. On behalf of the Concord's Town Board of Select, Select Board, I almost said Board of Select, Select Board, I want to welcome you tonight. Thank you, thank you all for, for being here. My job tonight is to explain the relationship of our local MCI Advisory Board vis a vis DCAM. I want to begin by saying that we're still in the very early discovery phase of this project. We're, we're still learning the questions, the opportunities, and the challenges we face. I also want the townspeople to know that the town of Concord does not own this property any more than it owns the property under the post office or the courthouse or Concord Academy. The state owns this land. That doesn't mean we don't have a strong voice in how this land is developed. The Select Board impaneled the MCI Advisory Board, a group of 10 experienced, knowledgeable, and competent people, to be the eyes, the ears, and the voice of Concord. Their job is to advise the Select Board on the best use of this parcel based on their analysis and the feedback from the community. The vision of DCAM and the Select Board aligns in many ways. We both see housing, decarbonization, mixed use, the preservation of historic structures, and opportunities for open space, especially along the Assabette River, all consistent with the town's diversity, equity, and inclusion goals. All the while, while providing fiscal benefits to the town. And by that, I mean, I'm hoping that, or we're hoping, that the revenue that we receive from whatever is developed there will exceed the cost of any services that it requires. The Advisory Board will, however, take a more holistic view of how this fits into our community. The Advisory Board will consider things outside of the 500 acres, such as, how does this integrate with the 12 acres to the south, also known as Junction Village, that the town already owns and is restricted to affordable housing? How will this impact the economic vitality of the West Concord Village? How will the redesign of Route 2 Rotary impact traffic flows within and around this parcel? What municipal needs could be met here? And what is the size and the scale of housing that we feel is appropriate? Our goal is to work collaboratively with DCAM to develop a reuse plan that addresses these questions and is in the best interests of the town. Our goal is to bring a plan and the associated zoning changes to you, the people of Concord, at a future town meeting. Your input during this process is critical, and I hope to see you again at future forums. I'm going to turn this over now to one of the co-chairs of the MCI Advisory Board to flesh out a little bit more the work of the Advisory Board, Patrick McCurdy.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, DCAM, for having the Advisory Board here tonight. My name is Patrick McCurdy. My wife and I live in Concord, got four young children. I'm a partner at McKinsey &amp; Company, and I'm a former officer in the Navy, so it's great to be back in public service, just as a bit of introduction about myself. I'm here tonight to represent the Advisory Board along with my nine other colleagues and our Select Board member, Mark Howell. The Select Board, a little bit about who we are. So everyone on the Select Board is a Concord resident, and it is a group of, of quite wide breadth in terms of diversity and experience, all of which is quite relevant and comes at the project from different perspectives, to include things like development, as you might expect, but real estate law, project management. And many folks on the committee have played various roles in, in town leadership and local business as well. I speak on behalf of everyone on the Advisory Board that, you know, we feel very privileged to be in the position that we are, and that we take very seriously our, our remit to ultimately represent the town in realizing the best outcome for the redevelopment of MCI Concord. Right? I'd, I'd like to reiterate a few things. One is that the town does maintain the zoning authority of the land ultimately, which I think is very important. The Advisory Board is very much, I think, in the driver's seat in, in representing the town in determining the visioning for what the parcel could become. And I would say that I would reiterate the great and collaborative relationship thus far with the DCAM and, and other stakeholders that we've engaged throughout the process. As Mary said, we're in the very early innings, and as what Abby said, of what could be, you know, will be quite a long journey. So would also ask for folks' engagement, participation, but also patience, right, in recognizing that we are really in a discovery phase right now and getting organized and thinking through how to first break down the problem before we start solutioning it. In terms of how we are, how we are working as an Advisory Board and how you can engage us, we're in a rhythm where we meet every other Monday, right here in this building, currently at noon for 90 minutes. That meeting is open to the public, so you can join us in person or on Zoom. And we always have time for public participation. We have broken the, the Advisory Board into three subcommittees, which are Legal and Government Affairs, Land Use Planning and Strategy, and Community Outreach. On that final note, Mary alluded to the fact that you'll be hearing more from us, and you will be hearing more from us in concert with the, the meetings that DCAM has scheduled will be. It's back. Sorry about that. We'll be complementing those with, with additional sessions to both communicate our latest analysis findings and updates, as well as gather input from, from the town. Barring that, I'll turn it over. I don't know who follows me, actually, but thank you very much for having me on behalf of the Advisory Board tonight.
Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Mary. Appreciate both of your comments and the town's partnership on this. I'm Paul Lillahogan. I'm a senior project manager with DCAM. And, if my clicker works, you know, we at DCAM really appreciate the partnership of the town and the town's proactive establishment of a resident advisory board. And we have heard from town leadership that there's interest in learning a little bit more about the MCI Concord site, as well as the process that we're undertaking before we open this up to you all tonight. So as you all... Taylor, can you advance this for me? Thank you. As you all well know, MCI Concord sits on the southeastern corner of the Concord Rotary on Route 2. It also includes property just to the west of Commonwealth Avenue, including the one remaining historic workers' house and the parking lot there. The Department of Corrections currently has care and control, as the Commissioner said earlier, and we are, we at DCAM are in conversation with them about what happens next. To be clear, the state, under one of our agencies, will retain security and maintenance of the site up until the point that it is transferred to another party. So we, you know, know that that is a point of interest and want to make that very clear. Couple other things around it. As Mary mentioned, just to the south is the Junction Village property owned by the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and we at DCAM hope this will be an opportunity to consider the two in tandem. And we do also want to acknowledge the ongoing planning with the Route 2 corridor study and planning for the Rotary that MassDOT has underway. The processes are separate. These are two different processes, but we at DCAM are in conversation with MassDOT and are doing our very best to ensure that these two processes proceed in tandem to the best that their two timelines allow. Zooming into the site a little bit, you know, MCI Concord, it's a 51-acre main property along with that ancillary piece across the way that I talked about. Acreage of that that would actually be included in potential development is still to be determined. There is also a wastewater treatment plant on site that currently serves MCI Concord and a few surrounding properties. As outlined in the legislation, DCAM made an offer at the end of August to the town to enter negotiations to purchase that property. That transfer is, you know, still to be determined down the road, but we anticipate that process unfolding over the coming months. We also anticipate that the historic cemetery will remain with the Department of Corrections, and we are not looking at that as a part of this transaction. And we don't anticipate that the agricultural lands will be impacted. As the Commissioner said, this, the farm remains open. Looking at the buildings on site, there are 35 buildings with, you know, roughly a half million square feet, 11 major buildings inside the walls, including buildings dedicated to administration and operations, dormitories, gymnasium, chapel, and vocational workshops. Buildings outside of the walls are also primarily dedicated to operations, and buildings inside the wall date largely to the 60s and 70s. There are two known historic structures on site which date to the early days of MCI Concord. The overflow building, which is formerly the Warden's House, is the one that is, you know, most visible and most iconically viewable from Route 2. There's also a historic, as I said, a historic workers' house. This is one of what used to be several historic workers' houses built in the 1880s around the prison. It currently houses administration, but, you know, is also under consideration here. A few adjacent properties that are not a part of this, but that are worth noting due to the impacts. The farm is not closing. It is serviced by the wastewater treatment plant on site, as are the state police barracks and the MassDOT garage on the north side of Route 2. Looking forward to the planning efforts a little bit here. You know, this effort was laid out by the administration in January and authorized in the fiscal year 2025 budget that was adopted recently. This calls for several things. It calls for DCAM to offer that wastewater treatment plant to the town, which we did at the end of August. Those negotiations will continue to take place, as I said. It calls for substantial public and stakeholder engagement. This is the first of a minimum of three large-scale public hearings like this to take place over the course of the process. There's an extensive list of parties that we are engaging, and we expect, in tandem, both between DCAM and the town, a variety of other public engagement outreach opportunities, which we will start to flag as we go here. Other components here, the DCAM Commissioner is required to file a planning report with the legislature before this property is disposed of. That means looking at a summary of the existing conditions on site, plans that exist for the site, a recap of all of the public input that we're going to be taking in a variety of formats, and a consideration of potential future uses on the site. That has to be filed before this can be disposed of, so there is a lot of work to be done and a lot of collaboration and a lot of input from all of you to inform this process. And then, lastly, the site is required to be disposed of competitively, so this needs to be a public and open process. Taking a look at a little bit of that redevelopment planning, we don't want to get too deep in on this tonight, but we are, you know, looking at existing conditions on site. There will be a visioning process, which we anticipate that comments received tonight will be an important part of. We anticipate that comments received in other forums, in the surveys that you may fill out in the room, in ongoing conversations will be a part of that. There will be physical planning informed by that visioning, including looking at the broader context, the adjacent sites, like we mentioned, ongoing planning for the Rotary and Route 2 nearby, and looking to set out a set of planning principles and guidelines. We at DCAM are not planning to site plan the site. We are planning to set a framework in place in collaboration with the town that will then hopefully be adopted by the town under a zoning update at town meeting and will govern the work that a developer would be able to do and would, you know, lead on site. And then, looking out at the engagement just a little bit more, you know, we anticipate that this will take more than a year, that, as Abby said, there are no shovels going in the ground next week, there's no shovels going in the ground next month, as she laid out. This is going to be a long process with a lot of involvement and a lot of engagement. This is the first of a minimum of three formal public hearings, and we're looking at a variety of other engagement opportunities. As Patrick mentioned, the town's Advisory Board holds bi-weekly meetings on Mondays. Those are open to the public. We encourage people to attend and make your voice heard there. We will anticipate some other public conversations in the evenings, and we've got a brief questionnaire tonight, but a broader survey further along in the process once there is more to weigh in on. And then, the town will be taking public input leading up to any prospective zoning changes at town meeting. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Abby.
Thanks, Paul. So just for anybody who wants to grab the QR code right here to the questionnaire that Paul just mentioned, leave that there for a moment, and then ask for the next slide. Just on some rules of engagement, and then we'll, then we'll open it up. So just a reminder, oh, QR code. Does everybody get it? All right. Taylor, go back, please, yeah. So, all right, you know what I'll do? I'll start talking, I'll start saying what I was going to say, and then we can skip some slides. So just a few rules of engagement here. Again, we really want to hear from you tonight, so we're going to ask, and we want to hear from as many people as possible, so we're going to ask folks to limit their comments to three minutes. I'll have a timer going here. I'll try to gently remind folks as you're, as you're reaching the limit, but I think you all are well-practiced at this, so hopefully, hopefully I won't have to do too much of that. We probably won't be answering questions here tonight. Again, I think we've talked enough. We really want to hear from you, but everything that we hear tonight, questions, comments, concerns, we are listening, we're taking it seriously, and we hope to incorporate feedback to all of that in future engagement touchpoints. And then finally, we'll do our best to toggle back and forth between folks in the room and folks on Zoom. It looks like we have about 150 people on Zoom. I imagine some of them also would like to offer comments. So I guess what I'll do is I'll ask folks who are in the room and would like to speak in just a moment to queue up, and then I might, you know, kind of ask the line to pause for a moment and then turn over to my colleague, Maggie, so that we make sure to have enough time for the folks on Zoom as well. And we'll try to toggle back and forth that way. For the folks on, sorry, Taylor, back to the Zoom slide. For the folks on Zoom, just a reminder, you can share your comments in writing via the Q&amp;A function. You can also raise your hand if you'd like to offer a comment, if you'd like to speak, you know, speak. And then, once you're recognized, you'll be given the opportunity to unmute yourself. And then, and then you can do that, and we should all be able to hear you in the room. So I'd actually like to first offer the floor to Kyle, sorry, either one, to Kyle Stapleton from Rep. Cataldo's office to kick us off, and then, and then we'll go to the mic.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Stapleton. I am State Rep. Simon Cataldo's legislative aide. Rep. Cataldo couldn't be here tonight due to a prior obligation, but he sends his thanks to DCAM for hosting tonight's forum, and to all of you who are attending here in person at the townhouse and online for your participation in this process. Since the announcement of the closure of MCI Concord, our office has been engaged in the process, has gotten us to this point today. We wrote the legislation that gives the town agency and leadership responsibility to re-envision this parcel, in addition to its ultimate zoning authority. We've also worked with Rep. Gentile and Senator Barrett to dedicate $725,000 through a legislative earmark to the town to engage professionals in this process in year one alone. Rep. Cataldo continued to be very clear, his objective is for the town of Concord to be the tip of the spear of this process, and for the people of Concord to be the creative engine behind this redevelopment. He believes that the legislation that has been crafted puts the town in that position if it's willing to do the work and is able to arrive at a consensus vision. Rep. Cataldo has also had several constituents approach him, wondering why the town is not pursuing a sales partnership agreement. Rep. Cataldo cannot speak for the town on that issue, but for his part, his answer is this: Show me the plan, show me how the town is using its state earmark money, and show me the zoning map that the committee recommends. And then, we can have that conversation about whether a sales partnership conveyance makes sense. Is premature to demand a massively important parcel of state-owned land be turned over for a dollar before the town has adequate time, and does, fully adopt the leadership role that the legislature has given to Concord over this parcel. This is a serious project, and an immediate sale of state-owned land to the town for a dollar is not a serious demand at this time. Either the representative or I have been attendants at each of the Concord Advisory Board meetings and will continue to be. In addition, we have been attending regular coordination meetings between town officials and DCAM, and we appreciate the state's commitment to partnering with the town through this endeavor. The legislation requires MassDOT involvement in this planning process and allows for the sectioning off of pieces of the parcel to be used for an above-grade solution on Route 2 at the Concord Rotary. This is a top priority of our office, and we are working with MassDOT to move this forward, given existing plans have historically called for an overpass at this location. Rep. Cataldo has been meeting on an ad hoc basis with many interested residents and will continue to do so. If you have any questions, concerns, or suggestions, please feel free to reach out to our office by email or phone. Again, thank you for your participation this evening, and thank you for having me here tonight.
Thanks, Kyle. I think I see four people queued up at the mic, so let's take comments from the four of you, and then, and then we'll have a period of Zoom comments, please.
Thanks very much. Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, speaking on its behalf. First, thanks to DCAM for this initial opportunity for public input on the future of MCI Concord. Thanks also to the Healy Driscoll Administration for its commitment not only to solving the housing crisis, but also to making our communities more livable and sustainable. The trust urges DCAM to coordinate the reuse and redevelopment of MCI Concord with the development of the abutting 12.8-acre Junction Village property owned by the Concord Housing Development Corporation. It's one of our highest priorities for the trust. As the town begins to commit its $475,000 in state funds for MCI's 51 acres, the trust has reserved up to $50,000 in R funds, should the need arise to ensure that the CHDC's 12 acres, which used to be part of MCI, can also be included in your planning process. Like MCI Concord, Junction Village is situated along the banks of the Asa Bette River, within half a mile of the West Concord MBTA commuter rail station. The MCI property can provide Junction Village with needed access to Commonwealth Ave. and Route 2, and maybe even to a wastewater treatment facility. Unlike MCI Concord, Junction Village is already included in Concord's MBTA community's zoning, which was adopted at town meeting in April, approved by the Attorney General in August, and is currently in effect. Concord's April town meeting also approved amendments to our fossil-fuel-free development bylaw to ensure that all new construction and major renovations will be fossil-fuel-free. That bylaw, too, is now in effect. Mr. Commissioner, as you engage with stakeholders and review our local plans and reports, please know that Concord's housing groups are undertaking an informational update to the town's 2022 housing production plan to note some significant changes in local circumstances since then. After falling below our 10% goal last year, two comprehensive permit applications were filed, and decisions on both are coming this year, and it will bring Concord up to 16.12% on our subsidized housing inventory. But the number of affordable units, including workforce housing, amount only to 7.2% of our total year-round housing stock, so there's more work to do in a community where many who work here still cannot afford to live here. The trust looks forward to working with DCAM and the town as this process proceeds. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Keith.
Hi, good evening. Chris Scarsy, 33 Maple Street. I'm encouraged by the discussion about a robust public process. I think that's great. It was about 15 years ago when we formed the West Concord Task Force and did a master plan for West Concord. I'm curious how the impact on West Concord itself, including the Business District in particular, will be studied. When we formed that committee, it was because there were a number of properties at the time that were for sale, and we recognized that partnerships with developers and landowners were important to get things done. Now, there are still, or again, a number of properties for sale in downtown West Concord. We have some intersections that are not particularly safe, so I would encourage perhaps a re-look at a West Concord master plan and thoughts about how the impacts on the Business District will be dealt with, expecting that those might not be the focus of a developer who's focusing primarily on the site. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Rich Feeley, 347 Lexington Road, President of the Concord Housing Foundation. We strongly support the Commonwealth's emphasis on housing, but I want to make a few specific points. Number one, we almost had an assisted living facility at the site. For complicated reasons, we lost it. Over the next 25 years, the population over 80 and 90 is going to grow between 60 and 80%. So don't forget that population as you plan. Secondly, please plan not just for affordable housing, but to encourage smaller, less expensive units that are still, you know, within, quote, "the market" of those who initially settle in Concord and don't have a trust fund or an IPO. So I hope you take that into account. And finally, obviously, we'd like to see the scale maintained. To the town, I would say, I know you want revenue, but don't sacrifice our other goals for maximizing revenue. And by that, I mean, mixed use, small retail, fine. Big box, I would oppose. And finally, as a citizen of Concord, I would say, let's think smart about how the people who work, live, or shop here get there, and let's try and minimize the amount of additional traffic on Route 2. There's got to be more, because the prisoners didn't go back and forth very much, but let's try and think that through and encourage- but let's try and think that through and encourage.
Thank you. We'll take one more comment in the room and then pause for a Zoom interlude.
Yeah, good evening. Hi, my name is Liz Rust. I live on 201 Commonwealth Avenue. And probably many people here think I'm going to talk about housing because that's what I do for the town and that's how I know many people. And I'm so thrilled that housing is part of your policy interests. But I'm actually here to talk about my interest with Concord Prison Outreach, which I'm very involved with. And I think it's important to provide some function here that hearkens back to the origin of the land. Not specifically to prison or incarceration, but to some of the root causes, maybe avenues for healthy healing, like in the broader area of social services, homelessness, addiction, trauma, domestic abuse. You know, the list could go on and on. And how this could be accomplished, there's many ways and it really aligns with the policy interests of providing opportunities for the underserved. And I know that that's a very open-ended, but I just don't want that to be forgotten in the grander discussions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Maggie, maybe, I don't know if there are a couple of comments you'd like to read or people you'd like to call on from the Zoom?
Yeah, I'm going to allow a speaker on Zoom. David Black is going to be allowed to talk now. David?
Yeah, thank you. This is David Black. I'm not a resident of Concord. I live in, on Central Street in, in West Acton. And so I want to talk a bit about connectivity. It's unusual for a piece, for a property this size to become available this close to a vibrant village area such as, as West Concord. It is vital that planning not be done in isolation. The prison is necessarily isolated by virtue of a wall. It is necessary to be a prison. Planning should err on the other side of providing connectivity to extend, extend West Concord. And it's very, very important to coordinate this with what needs to be done to Route 2, which is currently an effective barrier to the north of the site. It doesn't need, doesn't need to retain that way. And finally, it would be nice if the outreach, while necessarily focusing on Concord, could also bring in some of the interests of surrounding communities such as Acton. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to allow the next hand in the queue to talk. So Pamela Drit is up next. Pamela?
Unmute. This is so exciting. Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I want to urge you to consider an underpass at the Rotary rather than an overpass like is done on Staro Drive and Commonwealth Avenue in Boston that takes a smaller footprint and allows the surface to be used for parks and, and other non-through traffic without the congestion that a flyover would cause there. Just to consider. Also, I agree, I urge you to, to try to have some... The, the problem with the assisted senior housing project was not the project itself. That was an excellent idea. It was that it was not green. It wasn't all electric. It didn't have air conditioning. And I hope that we can revise it. I hope that we will consider overall planning of parks along the river and include clustered housing like we do for our planned residential development communities. Have solar and battery integrated into the whole design of the, the area, including considering network geothermal for heating and cooling on a, on a, on the scale of the whole parcel. And integrated mixed-use development with parking underneath like we already have in several areas in Concord. So that the, the amount of green and walkable area is maximized so that we can have higher-rise buildings and more walkable space. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more in the queue for the Zoom for now. Nasir Rana is next up.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for giving me your time. My name is Nasir Rana. I live on 1243 Allen Street. This is the section, if you're going west right after the Rotary, you get onto Route 2A or 119. So I wanted to make sure that our area is represented in all the considerations. We are not Concord. Well, we are part of Concord, but somehow we sometimes get lost in the thinking process. So I'm very grateful to the town, to the select board, to the town engineer, DOT, State Rep. Cataldo and Senator Barrett for helping us in a similar situation when we asked for a small piece of land to have a sidewalk. We are the community that is directly across the Concord farm. It used to be a small number of people, but now there's a lot of people here, about 60 to 70 houses, a good 80 or so kids, number of elderly people. And I just want to make sure we are represented it well in these considerations. We are happy to work with you and join the future, future meetings as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nasir. Let's go back to folks in the room first. Belle?
Hi, this is, I'm Susan Malodizanik. I am, well, I live at 392 Border Road in West Concord and I'm Chair of the West Concord Advisory Committee. And I just want to mention that our committee is very excited to work with the MCI redevelopment committee. A different speaker prior to me mentioned the West Concord Master Plan. And in fact, our committee is in the process of reviewing that plan right now and coming up with recommendations on what elements of that can perhaps influence the MCI redevelopment work. So again, our door is open and we love to be a part of this process in whatever way is helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Susan. Next.
Ellen Quackenworth, 206 Prairie Street. I am a longtime volunteer for Concord Prison Outreach and I am actually going to make a pitch to people. I've always considered folks in MCI Concord to be my neighbors and volunteered in the Tufts College Behind Bars program. Please don't forget, just because these folks have moved to Shirley, we'll still need to volunteer and help them. So just because it's out of sight, please don't make it out of mind. Anyway, having said that, I hope that the project integrates the, the MCI property into the West Concord residential recreation and mass transit systems, that it not be designed as a standalone project with a developer coming in and only looking at zoning at that property, but please consider the synergies that are possible. And they are amazing within West Concord. To complement Junction Park, which is focused on low-income housing, to be workforce housing. Our employees cannot afford to live in this town. Our kids cannot afford to live in this town. So I think workforce housing should be the focus. And also, please avoid the temptation of just looking at this as an opportunity to redo Route 2 and optimize car traffic. We have a railroad, we have a rail trail. Please integrate this into a multimodal traffic system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Good evening. Jim Barnes, 30-year-plus resident of Concord, up in the Nersnak Hill neighborhood. So it's sort of a, a long football throw, very long, up to there. I'm going to keep my comments and actually just a call for recommending that I, that there be a design competition. We have an incredible amount of talent in this, in this community. No doubt about that. But my concern has been on past projects where committees have taken charge of it and there's been certainly a lot of talent on the committees. But I think sometimes there's blinders that are put on. And in order to keep that open, I think having a design competition, bringing fresh ideas from outside the community, it can be done for short money, would be very useful to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, I see three more people in line, so let's do those folks and then we'll go back to folks on Zoom.
Hi, thanks. Sam Lyons, 137 Fairhaven Road, resident of Concord. I think, you know, housing is obviously the big topic on a lot of people's minds, but before the die is cast for that, I would strongly urge DCAM and the Advisory Committee to consider industrial uses of some sort. I know the Commonwealth has, and this administration in particular, have put a big push behind trying to keep a lot of locally incubated startups that are growing. A lot of those startups move out of state when they cite their manufacturing. These are clean tech companies that, you know, clean, we, we kept one clean cement company out in Holyoke. We've lost a lot to Ohio, West Virginia, a variety of other areas. And this site is really large. We can get high voltage power in from the Maynard Substation to the site. And, you know, I know in this room, it's probably not the first thing that people would like to see in their town. We do have other sites like StarMet in the future that could serve that need, but I would strongly consider doing this. There aren't going to be the traffic impacts of a really large housing development. It would provide a lot of property tax revenue to the town without an increase in the need for kids in the schools. And so from an affordability perspective, it won't be adding housing, but it could be decreasing the tax burden on the town. And it could really be a flagship project for the state and for the town to signal our intention to keep some of those types of uses in the Commonwealth. It's an important piece of the mix for any town in any state to have industrial, commercial, and residential uses. And I know it's a big push in the state as well. So I would just encourage there to be some thought given to working with Mass CEC and other organizations to look at that option as well.
Thank you.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. This is kind of a gentle, but, but a little uncomfortable nudge, which is that I gather that the, the revivification of the water treatment plant is going to cost a great deal of money. This town has already recently incurred massive expenses in terms of efforts and has others coming, coming along the line that are equally important to us. Since it is the state that let this facility to some degree deteriorate, ought not this to be, and ought not the state to share generously in the revitalization of that plant? I know it's, I know the negotiations will go forward, but I, I hope that's taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane. Next.
Hi, I'm Don Kupka, 39 Devon Street in Concord. And I'm a member of the Finance Committee, but I'm speaking on my own behalf. You're hearing a lot of great comments about the longer-term picture. My, so I'm going to limit myself to the next four years. It's 2028, I think, before envision redevelopment. So the first two, two comments really. One is, can you be clear with the town about what support you expect from town services? The, I was thinking of fire department and police, first responders. Nothing good happens in vacant buildings and I think it's important that we all be on the same page and know what those services, what services may be expected and then also know how they'll be paid for. And then, thank you Diane for teeing up my second question, which is I see that for the next four years, the state will be the only user of that wastewater plant. But Concord will, you anticipate that Concord will operate it. Can you assure the ratepayers of the Water and Sewer Department here that we won't be asked to subsidize your use? It's very hard, it's very expensive to operate a whole wastewater plant for three users. Will the state absorb all the operating costs of that wastewater plant? Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, over to Zoom.
There are no attendees raising their hands right now. I can read a few comments.
Any written comments, yeah, that you want to share with folks in the room? Thank you. Maybe while you're queuing those up, if they're, I'll, I'll open it back up to folks in the room for one or two more comments before we hear what's, what the chatter is on, on the chat.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Hi, my name is John Swinney. I live at 34 Arthur's Road in Concord. Question for the town and for the state as we think about affordable housing, adding to the traffic congestion resources utilization, whether it's public utilities, fire and police, schools, et cetera. How do we plan to address the limits to growth of the community? There are roads that can't be widened and things like that. So how do we address that and take that into consideration when we think about adding substantially to the population utilization, et cetera, of that site? Thank you.
Thank you. Maggie, any comments you'd like to share from the chat?
Sure, I'll go through a couple. One question, are there toxic substances in the ground? Another question here, in the spirit of dark skies, can you consider reducing the perimeter lighting? A comment, the solar farm infrastructure is sited over the wastewater treatment plant's infiltration filter beds and needs to be part of the wastewater treatment plant property. This is necessary to optimize the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant asset, both to the redevelopment and to the town's wastewater capacity relief needs. I'll add one more comment here. Affordable housing and smaller units are important. I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to offer any comments or questions? Or on Zoom, who'd like to raise their hand and offer a comment or question that way?
We have a hand on Zoom.
Great, why don't, why don't we go there?
Tanya, you're allowed to speak now.
Hi, Tanya Gago, 62 Prescott Road. Yeah, I'm, you just read one of my comments about affordable housing and smaller units, which another speaker also mentioned. And, and my other comment that I typed in, which may not be, you know, I just, just as people are raising concerns about the incarcerated people who were there already and their needs continuing forward, I also wanted to raise a larger concern about lack of shelter for unhoused people in the state. And, and just mentioned that it was surprising to me in some ways that the governor did not want to use some of the property for that purpose. My other concern would be that to have, like others have mentioned, some conservation land included in the final project. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you. We have one more on Zoom. Let's, let's go to the room first and then we'll come back to Zoom.
Maggie, thanks. Go ahead, please.
Joe Palumbo, 90 Black Horse Place. And I concur with the other, we live on the other side of the Rotary too, so we're, we're in on this. But the most important thing is how exciting this is for this community. And I really appreciated the remarks of the Commissioner and the three goals stated by the Healy Driscoll Administration. Because really, done correctly, this is the most exciting thing that could happen to this town in the last 150 years. Concord has the ability and has had a history of growing because of new families and new immigration. The population in the town was about 2,000 in 1850. Between 1850 and 1925, we tripled our population because of the arrival of immigrant families who wanted to build lives and build businesses and build the freedom and the joy that comes of being part of, of the American promise. That continued through 1975. By 1975, we had over 17,000 people in our community. And then we held steady. From 1975 to 2024, our population has not shifted more than 1,000 to 2,000. And that's a lot of the kind of exclusionary by design impact that we had in Concord in all of, you know, this part of Massachusetts. all of, you know, this part of Massachusetts. And we know now what that's done to us. People who can't afford to live here, people who can't afford to raise a family here, people who can't afford to stay here. And one of the beauties of this opportunity is we might be able to create a new Concord, a Concord that can really grow into the 21st century and do the same thing we've done before, provide that pathway for people to leave these awesome lives. And I know sometimes there's worry about more people means more cost, but the...this is one study, but the Massachusetts Taxpayer Foundation has a wonderful study that compares communities who brought in more housing. And actually, not only did the town revenues go up, but the value of homes went up as they brought in more residents. The contributions from the state went up as they brought in more residents, and the actual tax responsibility of the citizens went down as they brought in more residents. So as a person who is a product of an immigrant family who came here in 1925, I hope in 2025 and 2028 and beyond, we can keep doing it. So thank you so much for helping us bring this gift to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. To the Zoom?
Yes. I'm making it so that Sam can talk. Sam?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, my name is Sam Williams. I'm actually the Executive Director for Concord Prison Outreach. I'm not a resident, but I spend most of my working week in the town. And I think the comment that I probably want to make is in relation to the present future, I mean, the present time in the future. I would suggest for the Advisory Board to figure out how to involve some of the young people from the town, because I think the young people's voices, although they might not be as old as many of us and might not have the educational professional background, they have a vision for where they live at now and where they want to live at in the future and where many of them will live at in the future. So on the town planning process, somehow I think it's probably imperative that some young people's voices are involved from the very beginning, not later down the road. And I think on a larger planning process, the voices of the young people are important. I don't know how many young people in the audience today. I don't know how many young people are on Zoom. I just wanted to get that on record, that we cannot leave the young people out of this very important process that will impact their lives today and their future residency in the town.
Thank you, Sam. Maggie, anyone else from the Zoom or any other comments that you'd like to read out at this point?
Yes, one more on Zoom. Greg, you should be able to speak now. Greg? Okay, maybe we'll come back to Greg.
Anyone else in the room who'd like to offer a comment or question? Greg, have you been able to unmute yourself and offer your thoughts? One more shot for Greg. Okay, we'll go back to the room then. Please.
Yes, my name is Paul Denaro. I live on Commonwealth Avenue in West Concord. As a former employee of that prison 40 years ago, I would like, and I heard the Commissioner mention this, that people want to tour the place before it's torn down. And I really would like to see this come to fruition, because in my mind, I would like to see what it's like in there now. Thank you.
Can we sign you up as a tour guide? Anybody else in the room? Anybody else on Zoom?
Yes. Sorry, someone just raised their hand, but then appeared to put it down. If the hand comes back up, I'll let you know.
Thanks. Please. Yes, please, go ahead.
Philip D., 29 Bedford Street, Concord. I was wondering if it could be registered as an historic area where we had 50,000 soldiers and 3,000 horses there on their way to the wall? And if we could designate it as a historic area, would then that allow us to put restrictions on development?
Thank you.
I know the town doesn't like that word, restrictions, but...
Next, please.
Hi, my name is Nancy Kerr.
Can you...I'm sorry, can you step a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Nancy Kerr. I didn't think of this, but I read somewhere a comment, someone asked if maybe the razor wire could come down sooner than later. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have a hand on Zoom?
All right, let's go to Zoom.
Okay, Margot, you should be able to talk now.
Hello, this is Margot Kimball, 21 Winthrop Street. I run a small community arts organization in West Concord called Art for All, and we've had some interest for many years on getting a mural on the wall of MCI. And I'm still interested in doing that as maybe a matter of historical record, to keep part of that prison wall and put something up there. Perhaps it could be painted by incarcerated or formerly incarcerated people and speak to the very important history of, for better or for worse, of incarceration in our country and in the life of West Concord. And I also want to say just generally, as people think about creating a new development where people are going to be living in this area, always to keep in mind the really profound importance of arts and culture and a sense of belonging. And how do you build that into the development right from the beginning? Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Maggie, anything else in the chat or the Q and A?
I can read a couple comments in the chat. One comment, please work to restore and develop the historic buildings on the property. Next comment, this site, process, and project will ultimately be judged by the following measures of effectiveness. One, robust commerce development so as to provide fiscal benefits over town costs to reduce the property tax burden to residents. Two, residential development such that many generations of Concordians will not have to worry about MBTA zoning or 40B projects. I'll leave it there.
Is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak? Oh my goodness, we were wondering what we would have to do if it was nine o'clock and the queue was still out the door. That's the next meeting? It's a lot to process, yes. Thank you for that comment.
Abby?
Yes.
We have another hand on Zoom.
Thank you.
Priscilla, should be able to talk now?
Yes, I just want to comment that this has been very informative. I concur with Sam Williams in bringing in a younger residence, middle schoolers, high schoolers, children living with their parents. And I do want to suggest that the fountain in front of the administration building, the historic building, be kept. And I like the idea of an underpass as opposed to an overpass. And I appreciate all the comments tonight and look forward for ongoing communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. We're starting to lose people, and we did want to just kind of make sure that...to make folks aware of the next public forum, which is going to be hosted by the Community Advisory Board. So maybe we can take a moment, guys, to put that slide up so that people can get that information, even if they're starting to filter out. And of course, it will also be available on the website, and you can send a note to our email address and et cetera. So let's put that up, and I guess we can go on...there it is. Yep, right there. So this will be the next opportunity for engagement, again, hosted by the town this time and the Community Advisory Board. Excuse me, the Concord Advisory Committee. I still got that wrong. The MCI Concord Advisory Committee. Okay, so we can leave this up as eye candy, and if there are any last thoughts that anyone would like to share either in the room, on Zoom by raising their hands, or on Zoom by dropping a question or comment into the chat, please do so. All right, Paul, you want to bring us home?
Yeah. Click it forward one more time. Thank you, everyone, for...I lost it. We have contact info. Taylor, if you can move that forward. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. If you are in the room, please feel free to drop your questionnaire, if you had one, into one of the white baskets near the back. If you did not get one of those on your way in and would like to provide a little bit more input, please feel free to grab one. I think there are some pens back there if you didn't bring one, and you can fill it out and drop it. Otherwise, I'm sure town staff would be happy to gather those over the next couple of days. But we'd love to get as much of that feedback tonight as possible. To stay in touch with us, there are a variety of ways here. We've also got a digital version of that questionnaire that will be open for a couple of days here. We've got the MCI Concord redevelopment email address that you've seen a few times in this presentation that will send any questions, comments, wish to be included in future email lists, et cetera, straight to us at DECAM. And there are also informational webpages on both the DECAM website and the town website where you can go to see more information and to be kept abreast of upcoming events. Thank you so much.